Attorney.
All right, call this meeting to order. The Effingham County Planning Board Workshop of April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Now in session. Workshop topics.
Let's start with Ms. Chelsea's community management tree thing.
All right, so um, community tree management, um, reworked it from the last time you guys have seen it. Um, but there's still some work to be done for sure. Um, so if you will take a look at it. Um, I did kind of take out the uh, re-forced, I'm gonna mess that word up. Um. I took out a lot of the verbiage that um, maybe doesn't so much pertain to Effingham County as a whole. You know, because before we were looking more at um, what had come from Athens Clark County. Um, specifically, you know, working to really get the definitions down. Um. I do want to discuss kind of tree canopy, what you guys see. Um, get your feedback for what you guys would see as um, you know, coverage goals. Um, within zones. Um, I, I have gone back and forth looking at Bryan County, City of Savannah. They range from um, you know, forty percent, um, twenty percent, um, you know, I kind of. Want your feedback on that before I specifically put it in here and send it off to the county attorney, so.
So when you're talking about forty percent, are you talking about like a development, a subdivision?
Right, yes, sir.
Maintaining forty percent of. There. The original trees, then trees are there.
So it would be um, maintaining what's there and then also if there, say there isn't that much there. Um, putting um, trees in that would then create that forty percent of canopy coverage. Um, to add to total county canopy coverage.
Their intent statement starts with blah, 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 fifty percent, blah, 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 forty percent, and then there's a bunch of math inside the ordinances of how you go about achieving that. And it's industrial, residential. In general, they all have to meet it. You don't get an out. Uh, you might get an out from a tree fund payment like. As opposed to wasting a bunch of trees on the backside of an industrial project, you make a payment to the county or whatever for trees somewhere else, but. Is there?
So in the ordinance you have right now, I don't have a chart um, in that, I don't, um, not right now. I kind of wanted um, your feedback and kind of maybe um, what you would like to see. Um, you know, I have a, I have a draft that I've worked on, uh, but it is nowhere near ready. Um, and it is not, um, I don't think it would, it would suffice.
So I, I, one thing I'd like to, I, so I. Forty percent, you're, you're probably not gonna timber a subdivision ever again, right?
Well, both Savannah and Bryan, you could timber the whole thing, you just gotta plant back. Right, I mean, unless it's a, what they call an exceptional tree in Savannah. And even that's got to have some, are supposed to have some historical value, just a size along can't preclude your private property rights, but.
Just because it's a big live oak, doesn't necessarily.
Right. But certain ones, like right on key properties, it can for sure, but the, the goal. Uh, like it's, I, it's either in there, I guess it's not purpose and intent, maybe they've got another line that's even like. And the goal of this ordinance or something, but it does talk about fifty percent and then, you know, and then all the rest of the ordinances, how do you go about.
Getting the fifty percent?
And they basically just have some tree calculations that. Obviously preservation is, if you preserve twenty percent, you get twenty percent credit and then you gotta make up the twenty, other twenty percent if you needed forty through plant back.
Okay.
And that's, and that's why I was asking, is there that, cause without seeing exactly like what? That.
So in there, no, it is not. It is not specifically spelled out in that.
It'll be a bit hard to comment on, like. Is that too much or too little without knowing, like, is there a, you know, what's the penalty if there is mitigation required and then what is the overall goal um, toward meeting that, but? It is.
Do you get credit for your buffers?
Um, so we can def, I mean, yes, I think, I think that should be um, absolutely in there, um, especially because, you know, we, we value buffers. Um, and because um, you know, they can be, especially when we're looking at industrial properties, um, they can create that.
Yeah, I think that gives a lot more incentive to having buffers, you know, whenever.
High percentage. Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And preserve buffers, too. Like if you can give a c, extra, like, extra credit, sounds like school, but literally, they, they often to a big tree, right? A fifty inch live oak would count as. Ten trees toward meeting some, if there's a ten, if there's a tree requirement, right, or it counts as extra because we wanna incentivize you to, you're not, we're. You might get penalized, you might have to mi, bigger mitigation, but also giving incentive to try to work around it, um, some ordinances of that.
Should it be a ratio to the proportion of the canopy of the tree?
Cause the canopy is covering a certain footprint. I, I've read through your handout here for the definitions, is there any restrictive species of trees like the Bradford pear, is that gonna be named or?
Um, so we can definitely put restrictive species on here, I am working with um, the, I reached out to you and I'm, I'm drawing a blank here, I'm sorry. Um, I've worked with a couple, one hundred, one hundred miles, I believe, um, they, they sent me some comments. Um, I've had some comments from other uh, local uh, places within Effingham that are, that are very supportive of having a tree protection ordinance. They have suggested um, having restrictive um, species and so uh, we will have a list. Um, and the ordinance, this um, draft does specifically talk about having um, an Effingham County um, species list and so we will have that as well. Um, that developers or um, even our single lot folks can plant, um, if they so choose.
Do you, I mean, you're, you bring up that because it's invasive now?
Well, I hear a lot of, uh, I have one in my yard, I think it's a beautiful tree, but um, I hear a lot of negative comments about it's uh, it's. Very um, aggressively taking over or some, I don't know what it's.
In areas, I mean, it has, I mean, it, it, it is now become probably more of, and maybe that's something that goes on the list, I mean, not planting invasive trees or, you know, bushes and shrubs, stuff like that.
That, that's what I was gonna suggest, but there's, there's, there's references out there, we could just refer to UGA publication or something and as it gets updated with new species that are no longer viable, we don't have to change the ordinance, it's just whatever, like.
Yeah.
I mean.
Perfect.
There's no reason for our ordinance to have to be the expert in what's uh, invasive species. But you ask Bradford pears for bad.
But is that now a, a state mandate that you're not allowed to plant them and if you have them, you're godfounded in, I would think, but you're not allowed to.
Not, they typically control it when nurseries aren't allowed to grow them and sell them anymore. If you wanted to go get one from your neighbor that was growing somewhere because it had seeded, you'd be fine to do that, but.
Interesting.
So um, I did within here and again, again, more of a definition, um, you know. What we consider landmark trees, what we consider, um, you know, an Effingham tree, um, you know, just trying to flesh that out as well. Um, definitely trying to make it more um, Effingham specific instead of, you know, taking from some of our surrounding counties.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, there's. I don't know how you get to this place, but. In the past, it's been the custom to just clear, you know, every single thing. Um, you know, and county staff was out at Laurel Grove last week, phase one. I mean, and we, you know, uh, my contractor did take to time to go um, pull points on every, on all the viable trees. Before we cleared, to try to figure out if they were savable or not, you know, were they in the middle of a lot? On their, are they in the backyard, they're on the back line, um, so, you know. And we did get to save some, you know, I. I don't know how to get it, that. Put down so that that is something that gets at least looked at. You know, what can, you know, with this design, what can we leave and what can't we leave, um, if that's even an option? Um, but you know, figuring out a plan, so you know where your green space is and all that before you go in there and start clearing, because that's been the, the norm here, you know. You get an LDA and you go in there and start clearing before you ever have a plan, you know, plans into works, um, so. Um, trying to get that step before you just go in there and clear out everything. Because I do think the green spaces, you know, I, I know, I think people should get a big credit for, you know, leaving some goo, leaving trees in, in these green space areas for sure.
What kind of credit?
I don't know. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, that's, I, I don't know what kind of credits other people do, but you know, I mean.
I, I'm, I'm a density credit guy.
What's that mean?
I think they should increase their density if they make the effort to save the trees. Don't we want them to cluster anyway?
Or actually increase the density of the approved, I mean, that, that's certainly one of the bases of like a conservation ordinance. That allows you, if you preserve certain key natural resources, whether it's trees or.
Everybody's happy.
To other sensitive areas that they'll allow some additional density beyond what you would even got if you'd have cleared that area to begin with.
Yes.
And that's a, that's probably the route that versus giving them more tree credit, it's gonna get somebody's attention because if they can get two more houses because they preserved one big tree, it's probably a, a way to. Figure it out, as long as it's truly allows like.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we did in Brunswick County and it, it really worked.
That's an interesting trade-off.
Do you increase your overall number over say a standard R five? Would you be able to up? So you would.
You'd be able to up and, up and shift, really, yeah.
You have to figure out what the number is, obviously, it would be something ridiculous.
Yeah. I mean, so R five is what, eight an acre, is that what it is?
Smaller than the small lot.
Five.
Five an acre, so you could do something like eight an acre.
Right, so, but, but you would have to let them also vary the lot, lot width.
That's what I'm saying, you're gonna have to.
Right, it couldn't just be. More, it's gonna be more, right?
You have to be more and smaller.
Or to preserve trees on R five, it's gonna have to be a cluster, not on a lot, cause there's no way to preserve.
Yeah.
You shrink the setbacks, you shrink the setback from the building to the line, or you just create smaller lots?
R five is what, fifty feet wide?
Sixty-five, fifty-five.
Uh, R six is sixty-six hundred to R five is fifty-five hundred?
R.
I think it's.
No, R six was eighty-five hundred square feet, so R five should be.
I think it's fifty, sixty-six.
Yeah.
I think it's fifty, wide, sixty, cause that's.
Sixty by hundred, right?
So yeah, you would have to let them go like forty-five foot wide lots, which some of these PDs are proposing anyway now.
So the one that recently passed.
Hmm.
You know how, how they moved them away from the property line and then did this?
Grace Community Church.
Yeah.
That's the one. While there was some opposition to the overall, you know, piece of property. That's the design that you want. Because now they're to, for their resources, you know, so they saved the trees out front, they saved the trees on that side, so they did that. They're bucked up against the railroad track, but that's the, that's what you're looking for.
I still think pres, preservation or not, there should be a minimum standard that they had to plant, but, I mean.
Yeah.
City of Savannah wouldn't be what it is right now if they didn't plant trees down, cause I know those, those live oaks on those streets were not there because they, that happened to fall in line, somebody had the foresight to plant them a long time ago, so.
So you wanna put two trees for every lot? And then put them in when they pull a building permit or before they pull the permit?
It's two trees per lot or a regimented street tree program that's between forty to sixty feet on center for the.
For CO, whenever landscaping is done.
I mean, that's a detail that could be worked out, but having a planting requirement. I mean, that's a detail that could be worked out, but having a planting requirement, meeting some sort of overall percentage. I think it makes the ordinance defensible when you've got, alright, well, we, we think tree canopy is important, so we're setting a standard. And then the entire rest of the ordinance works toward how does each project meet that standard?
Sure, yeah. And I thi- I think the individual basis for the projects, as long as there are a set of guidelines.
Right.
And we have some, some opportunity to be flexible depending on the piece of property and what's on the property.
And there, there should definitely be examples.
Yes.
Like, so it's very clear of how, cause just relying on interpretation of the code. So Savannah does a pretty good job of that, actually, with like, here's how subdivision, single family subdivision works. Because that, they have another layer, they have a landscape requirement on commercial stuff, so a number of shrubs and stuff like that that you gotta do as well. But I know we're, we're not there yet here, but um, so their big difference there was they had two different examples for that. They basically say residential subdivision, everything else.
So you have to plant six, two, you know, four inch trees or ten two inch trees? I mean, is that?
Savannah, they don't want you to plant bigger, right? And I think this is a good approach. You usually don't have as much success, the bigger trees. They'd rather you plant more smaller and let them grow.
Yeah, and I'd rather you not take them down at all than put them back in the ground.
Which is why the buffer should definitely count.
Yeah, which is why the buffers should definitely count. Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely, in a buffer.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't care if it's wetland buffers, they should count.
How long does it normally take for a tree to become semi-mature? I mean.
Which tree you wanted to talk about? Would like a live oak?
A live oak at twenty years old is a pretty good tree. About, well, twenty years since it's been planted, it might have been alive in the nursery for three or four years before that, but. Our parking lot at my work is twenty-five years old now, and the trees in it definitely are doing its job of shading the parking lot. And I think that's a big thing. It shouldn't just be subdivisions, commercial sites should shade some of these asphalt parking lots they've got and stuff like that. And that should be covered in the ordinance.
It almost would seem like you should require a tree survey before they clear the, the lot. And say, how many trees you're gonna have in here will be required.
But that does need to, in my opinion, needs to have a reasonable standard to it. And if there's not a severe mitigation requirement and it's just a survey to know where they are, it's a huge, it can be a huge cost to just say we're taking them out, right? So like, um, we have a lot of places that we work in now that like there, certain things like live oak, eighteen inches or above, you gotta locate it and work around it. Any other hardwood, twenty-four inches above, minus things that people don't like, sweet gums, whatever they may, they may be. And then pines, maybe thirty-five inches above or something like that. Then you have the option, once you know where you're preserving, to meet the rest of the ordinance. You could then come back and do additional survey to prove you've met with smaller understory stuff that you would have never surveyed and picked up throughout the rest. But.
Yeah, I just, so there's a, um, long leaf acres out off of Goshen. Um, their stormwater pond, um, they took in a couple nice sized oaks out there. Um, for, and then they went around it with, could stormwater pond out there. They kinda did some of that out at Creekside too. Um, so it, it looked, it looked good. Um, so the common areas also could be included is really what I'm getting, you know, where you could have common areas included. I was trying to think of some other examples that. And yeah, so out at um Laurel Grove, now there really weren't too many trees out there to begin with, where there, I don't think there were. But there's some ones on corners and, in their common areas that they kept.
Landowner timbered it.
Yeah.
How big were the lots there?
Yeah.
Sixty-five by hundred.
But I mean, as you get, as you, as this progresses, whatever we get into place. I mean, you have the northern end of the county where, you know, there's just, there's a lot of, of trees, there's a lot of significant trees. Um, and then, you know, really, to the west, there's still some properties too. But I, I just, if, if I were to um relive, you know, what I've seen successful before in my career, density for trees has always worked.
Well, and that's something that um I definitely want to get in here and um, I will get to another rough draft um as we, as we get closer to what we definitely want for this.
One, one final thing, I think just be very clear as to what you expect to be on the tree survey. Don't have it broken out to where here's a landmark, here's a Effingham tree, here's a protected tree in three different sections. For somebody that didn't have to interpret what they're supposed to survey to show back to you. It should be very clear, we expect to see trees just greater than this, like, that, that, somebody shouldn't have to guess at what that, sorry, because it happens all the time. Like, it's not clear as to, okay, what is actually the, the one we've got to identify and make sure we work around?
So present company not included, h- how many tree surveyors are there in the area? Cause right now, we only have a couple soil scientists and a couple, you know, surveyors. So I just didn't want, you know, it to be hard to have the resources to be able to do the job.
Well, I mean, if we really wanted it to be, you'd say it's arborist.
Arborist, yes.
And then they go GPS locate it much quicker than a conventional land surveyor can do it.
Yeah.
And then they give you a report that says, yes, this is a forty-eight inch tree, but it's not healthy.
Right.
And then that gives you justification to be able to remove it. That, I mean, there's definitely people that can do that and.
Is that a?
If there's more ordinance.
Is that a registered forester?
Registered forester would be able to do it too. I mean, in a big forestry application, especially when it's planted stuff, foresters are doing a lot of the stuff in um Bryan County and then arborist in the smaller, where it's more of a hardwood canopy or downtown situation or something.
What's the definition of an arborist?
Definition of an arborist? SAE arborist, I don't know exactly.
But I would say timbering folks that have been timbering for twenty years has the same general experience, in my opinion. You walk just as much property as they do, right?
But there should be multiple lists of, I, I should be.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's right.
A surveyor, I mean, if he's knowledgeable about trees and those species, but it's just somebody that's actually got the tree where with all of us now grade them and say, yeah, that's a big tree, but it's not healthy. You shouldn't have to take, you shouldn't get penalized if we got mitigation. You shouldn't have to mitigate something that's dying in the first place. That's something, if we want a good, strong ordinance, that, that's completely fair to both sides. And gives protection when people question why did the trees come out? You've got, well, here's.
Yeah, we don't wanna leave it to an HOA two years later to have to take it down.
Alright.
That's expensive.
Do we have any forest rangers still in this community, in this county?
Um, let's see.
Cause there is a.
We have a, we have a forest service, right?
Georgia Forest Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one out there on one nineteen, three, eight, about an old high school.
Yeah, yeah, is that still active?
Yeah. But these would be like a private consultant that's coming out and doing this, just like you'd hire an engineer or landscape architect, surveyor. It would be that. And that's why I said we just gotta be a little cautious, so like. If you say we're, we wanna see every twelve inch tree on a couple hundred acre site, that's gonna be extremely expensive and a waste of money because most of them are gonna have to come out. Right? We just gotta figure out what that important size is to us.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, you wanna go over some more stuff, or is that, we're pretty good with that one? Go ahead.
Glad it's progressing.
Uh, let's see, so we wanted to let you know that there is gonna be an addressing ordinance that's going in front of the commissioners. Um, our addressing right now is like two page, two sentences long. And it doesn't address everything that needs to be addressed in addressing. Um, since it's in the ordinance chapter and not in the zoning or the subdivision, um, that's why we just. And it was put together by Kimberly um and Pam, E nine one one, Sheriff, EMS, Post Office, everybody got their hand in that one.
So what are you talking about as far as addressing? I mean, how someone gets a new address?
How they get a new address, what, where that address is displayed, um, how it's displayed. Um, what signage has to be for non-private roads and private roads? County roads, um, you know, the basic green sign, what the font size, you know, just the standardization of that. Because right now, it's, it's not written. Um.
I thought the address of a property was issued by the US Postal Service.
It is not.
It is not.
It is not.
Unreal.
Do you have a real mailbox anymore? Do you have a real mailbox?
I have a, I have a real mailbox.
Hold on to it.
And a post office box?
No.
You don't have a post office?
No.
No, you can't do those anymore.
Everything has to be clustered, yeah.
I have a mailbox on the street.
Yeah.
On Northridge Street, and I have a mailbox on Marion Road in front of my house.
Yeah, so a lot of the subdivisions now um are all cluster boxes where you'll have four or five parking spots and the mail um individual, the US Postal Service individual just makes one stop.
I've seen that.
They won't allow you to put individual.
Yeah, it was from the.
Unless you're really outside.
Master general or whatever.
Yeah.
Put a letter out.
There's this, um, what's that subdivision off of uh Log Landing, it's way back up in there. Yeah, that's, I, I, I know somebody back in there and I noticed that there's this big array of boxes now.
Yes, right. And it's, that's so, yeah, it's gonna be bougie to have your own box.
That's what I'm saying, hold on to it.
Yeah.
I'm joking. Now, if you're rural, they'll still have to do it, right?
Yeah, rural is, yeah. Um, so that's one that's gonna be going. Um, so six point two, um, Article six, six point two in the zoning ordinance is about yards. Um, I think we looked at this at one point in time, didn't we? Or did we not? We did. Anyway, it's about accessory structures and pools, and we're just cleaning up what it says. Um, and it was advertised for when?
Four sixteen.
Four sixteen. Um. Chickens are relevant again. Um, so Sammy Samantha has made some changes to the animal ordinance. Again, I'll let her talk about those real quick if you want to.
Is it gonna allow roosters?
Samantha, do you, would you like the, your paperwork?
So roosters are not allowed in R one, so like Ramsey Landing, um, there's a couple properties off of Long Pond. They are allowed for hens, chicken hens specifically, um, and they have to get a backyard hen permit. Other than that, AR one and AR two, you can have just about as many chickens as you want. Um, so that's kinda the.
What about the coop?
The coop has to be a hundred and fifty foot from the neighbor's dwelling, not their property line from their actual house.
Is that a change or has that been in the ordinance for a while?
I don't think we had that in ordinance.
It was originally two hundred foot, but it was reduced to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but we've had a distance in there.
It's always been a distance in there.
So did what we discussed last time get approved, or is this just now?
It did get approved.
Okay, so what's?
But, so the, um.
There's a lot of backlash.
Really?
Well, there was misinformation.
Negative chicken?
No, there's, so. The original animal ordinance was back in, what, ninety-three, ninety-seven, and nobody knew it existed. And so what, what you're hearing now is, well, I didn't know, I didn't know. And then they refer back to the changes that we made last year and think that that's, you know, the only version that ever existed. That's not true. In fact, what we did last year was allow more chickens in more of the zoning district than had been before. Um, and now we're, we're going to bring in front of the commissioners, the, the more rural zonings of AR one and our, and AR two, to just not have a limit at all. And unless we get a code violation complaint or something like that. Miss um Samantha also removed the permitting requirement um for them in any district, right? Just AR one and AR two.
So original, and the one we did back in November, the AR one and AR two did not have to have the permit, permitted part, just R one. We did leave that the same. So just R one has to have the permit.
Right.
And we also uh defined commercial livestock and fowl, cause I know there was a lot of confusion about that. Pretty much being your primary source of money is the summarized version of the definition.
Rather than a pet.
What does it take for them to get the permit? Pretty easy?
Just go on uh OpenGov and apply for it. It's usually issued that same day. And it's just to protect um the people in case they get a code enforcement complaint. Code enforcement is already aware that they have four chickens, they've done everything that they're supposed to do.
What is it?
Twenty dollars.
That has also been removed.
Dollars worth of eggs to make it up and not be commercial?
That fee has been removed.
Ah, okay, there you go.
You refunding people's money?
We've never taken money for it.
I haven't.
So is there really a lot of pushback?
Uh, there's a six hundred signature petition.
Chicken police.
Was it because people were getting denied, or they were just mad that?
No, they just didn't know something existed in, in the past.
Yeah.
And so they think that what was passed is, is currently taking all their chickens away.
So I have a question, wha- excuse my naivety for this question. But what does the homeowner that lives in a residential neighborhood that can have a chicken coop a hundred and fifty feet away from my property line? What is that person gonna do with the chicken waste? The droppings? Where does that go? I mean, that stuff stinks.
So as a former chicken owner, I can tell you that um a lot of the times um, a good chicken owner that um has a coop um will collect those um.
Droppings.
Droppings, and they'll dry out, and then they'll um com- composite them or compost them in their gardens and stuff like that. And it's really extremely effective at um increasing your gardening ability.
Full of nitrogen and.
Thirty-four, forty-one percent, it's a lot, yeah.
But it's full of ammonia too.
Um, once it dries out, most of the ammonia is released from it, yeah.
But I think that's the intent of limited four, right?
Yes. Yeah, four, four.
That's to the person that has, you know, social concerns, but what about the person that is a sociopath and doesn't really care about the droppings and just lets it fume in the backyard? What are you gonna do to that? Is that a code violation?
It can be. Yes. So ju- just because four chickens are allowed in an, in an R one district doesn't mean that you can't have a code violation um because of smell or, you know, flies or something like that.
Interesting.
Yes, but, but this is, you know, there are some folks that have a hundred chickens out at an AR one that aren't affecting anybody. Um, and then they wanna make sure that, you know, if something happens and the culture changes, they're still able to do what it is that they need to do with their hundred chickens.
Yeah, especially a neighbor who pops up beside them or something.
That's, and that's, that's.
They wanna make sure it's clear that they're, they have the right to do it.
And that's the fear, and that was the point of putting in the permit process, was to make sure there was a record of it. So if we did get a code complaint, we could go back to the permitting process and say they have a permit, this is how much they're allowed to have. And so it's not a code complaint at that point in time. But I, you know.
So are they allowed in R five, R six?
No, so they are not. Only R one is allowed for chicken hens.
In the Rs, the ARs they're allowed to have.
Yeah, AR one and two are allowed.
What are they, one and two? Okay.
Now, even then, we have some non-conforming AR twos that are less than an acre, and we have some non-conforming AR ones that are less than an acre. So those might be an issue at some point in time.
The minimum acreage would be half an acre. The minimum acreage would be half an acre.
And some HOAs won't allow it. I know my HOA won't allow it.
Correct.
Right. But I'm sure you do fifty-five miles per hour every time you're on the fifty-five mile per hour road too.
Go nine miles over.
Yeah, that's right. So that equals nine chickens over four, so you got thirteen where you're at. Um, so that's, that's coming in front of the commissioners as well. Um, so Appendix E, um, so this is homework for next time that we meet in May. Please go into the ordinance and read Appendix E. It's called Development Plan Review, is that what it's called? And tell me what you think that applies to, whether it applies to everything. Subdivision, commercial, industrial, tell me what you think it applies to.
And that's Appendix E, and where is that?
In the, just the, the ordinance.
Are you gonna send that to us or?
Oh, she can send it to you.
Thank you, that would be nice.
Um, let's see.
The spelling count, is there gonna be a test?
Spelling, it, it's, it's spelled well. It's just, we don't, there's, there's a lot of debate internally and externally of what it applies to. And because it's called Appendix E, after everything that, you know, has already come before it. It's almost like the last thing in the list of ordinances. I, I feel like it was in addition to solve some type of issue that kept reoccurring. So I figured you guys might be able to really tell us what the intent was behind it. Uh, also coming in front of the board. Will be a partial abandonment of Otis Secondary Road. That is off of Blue Jay on one side and Hodgsville the other, right? Yes. Um, there is a piece of property that that road runs through that is a large piece of property. That's not gonna affect any, any homeowners on that part of it. Uh, there's, uh, a request to abandon the maintenance of the right of way and the road. Uh, there'll be a eighty-foot, um, cul-de-sac put at the end of, um, where it goes to Hodgsville. And so that's gonna be going through the process too, then you'll probably get a rezoning come before you for that property. Um, Chapter one of the International Residential Code. Is gonna go in front of the Commissioners' Workshop on four sixteen. We're gonna need to adopt that, we've not adopted it before. And there's just some things in there that, um, the building inspectors can use on occasion. The state has changed the rules for body art. So, body art.
Barty, bo- body art.
Or, or barty art, we could do either one, yeah. So, um, examples, um, if you need them, we'll, we'll give those to you, but. So the, uh, Department of Health. Um, is the one that's gonna want to handle the body art. We currently have an ordinance against body art. So we're gonna have to look at whether we legally have to, um, remove that ordinance and, and allow. Um, body art places in the county.
We don't know, I mean, as soon as you're talking about tattoos, tattoo.
Tattoos, piercings, and microblading.
You're talking about the actual, to provide the service to have it, not to have it on your body.
Correct, so I'm not gonna require the planning board to go get one, no.
What'd you say about blading?
Microblading. Um. Samantha, would you explain that?
Color on your eyebrows.
Yeah, permanent color on your eyebrows.
On your eyebrows, ultimately.
Lips, that they can do lips, eyeliner, you know.
That's permanent makeup that you're referring.
Oh, that's right, they need to do permanent makeup too.
What is the county's position on its staff having body art? It can be exposed or does it have to be? Going to Aaron's, you can't be walking around with tattoos on you.
At where?
At my Aaron's franchise.
Oh, really?
Can't believe you can't have a tattoo part.
Um, we, we address that in the personnel policy, um, that HR has written. Um, and I think that there's, there's some exposure is okay. If, you know. On occasion.
I personally think that facial tattooing should be banned.
Internationally?
Internationally.
Okay.
Two each is his own.
Uh, pardon me while I change my schedule here. So. So, um, they're gonna come and talk to the commissioners about it and see, you know, where that is all gonna. But because the state changed the way they're, they're doing business, we're gonna have to talk about that. Um, and then.
So one question.
Sure.
So there are, they are a lot of them, I mean, are they only in like cities? I mean, is that?
They're in the municipalities, yes. Now, there are some counties I think that allow them, but this one just currently doesn't. Um, and so that's really goes back to a First Amendment kind of issue?
Yeah, how is that freedom of speech, I guess, is interpreted that way?
And then, uh, just let you know that, um, we've, uh, got about a total of a hundred and seven business licenses that have been returned to Samantha. Out of, that's probably half.
So how many?
Seven hundred and nine.
We have more than that as of today.
Oh, we have more than that, okay, so.
Turned?
Returned.
What do you mean?
Renewed, uh, applied for.
Okay.
So.
Out of what, what is that, what is?
We mailed out thirteen hundred letters last year, um, so.
Oh, so people aren't getting their.
Their license.
Getting their license.
They were in business and they, oh, you, oh, you had the renewal.
Yes, and this is the first time we went online with Open Gov, so we've made the renewal online. So it'll be much simpler next year for folks to be able to do it than, than this year.
You sent out thirteen, seven hundred came back, is you saying six hundred people didn't, like, shut their business down or they just haven't complied?
Some of them have shut their business down, some of them just haven't renewed yet. But out of that thirteen hundred, there were still numerous businesses that have never had a business license in F and M.
Yes. So that's one of the things that we focused on with code enforcement. Is, um, the businesses that are out there. Um, as they find them, we just encourage them to do business license and then also. Um, the fire inspector, when she does her life safety inspections, also asks if they have a business license. So we're, we're in a system now to where that's gonna improve. Um. And then the other code enforcement issue that probably we're gonna have to address. Is currently unless you're building a house. And they come before us, um, for a variance to put an RV on the site. Um, there are, um, numerous, um, RV violations that we're finding across the county. Um, either duplicates, uh, in addition to the primary residence, electricity only, something like that. But that, that's, code probably does that six times a day.
People living in an RV on.
Yep, on other people's property, on their property, um, with permission from their property. Uh, but yeah, that's, it's, it's quite a lot. Now, I don't know the original history of why that's not allowed in any form or fashion, except for when building a house. Um, so anything you can, you know, tell us about that, you know, email us or whatever the history on that.
Well, I mean, maybe.
Well, we were just giving the people consideration, you know, they only had ten to twelve months and then you gotta quit. Disconnect it from the septic and.
What, what is the issue? Like, what is predominantly the issue of places that get concerned with it? I could see it on like a lakefront county where you've got. People wanting to put them on smaller lots all over the place, but. I mean, there's a housing crisis.
Is it a form of housing that's acceptable in the county?
I don't know, I mean, I can't see it and somebody's got a way to live, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, that's why I was wanting to, I was curious what everybody else thought, like. Uh, obviously it opens a, I guess, a bit of a Pandora's box and it's easier to say it's just not allowed, but.
Well, you can have an RV on your property, but you can't live in it.
Correct.
But when people came to us, they said, well, we're gonna build a house, can we get a variance to hook up to the septic while, and we said, yeah, you have ten, twelve months. But when you finish building, unconnect it and, you know, use it for recreational purposes only.
Right, but code enforcement is finding them set up.
And still set up.
No. Just set up.
Uh, I, I got my RV parked in your backyard and I'm living in it.
Yeah, thanks to you, he, you're allowing them to do it. They haven't come before variance, it's just, that's housing for, for Dave.
So he's asking, I mean, he's asking, what is the problem? I mean, is it a problem? Do we see it as a problem?
Yeah, do you wanna address the wrong?
Where it was a problem?
Definitely shouldn't be allowed where chickens aren't allowed.
I would disagree with that. But I mean, there's, and a lot of it, um, you know, it's a, it's a second housing unit on a primary residence, they have a house.
In our subdivision right now and the HOA is hot and heavy on having that thing removed, but. Yeah, somebody has a beautiful home and put a, a motorhome in the driveway and is living in it.
Yes, that's what code enforcement is running into all over the county. So it's something, you know, that, you know, we're probably gonna have to address sooner or later.
I, I would be more in favor of addressing about the, the zoning classifications, I mean, I, I don't know. If you've got a hundred acres out in the woods and you wanna set your camper up.
To hunt out of it or whatever.
I mean, I, I, I never really saw a problem with that, but, you know, the neighborhoods, subdivision, smaller lots, um. I don't know.
I thought there might be some bigger health code reason why you couldn't do it, right, cause like modular homes and things are governed by. Completely different standard than stick-built houses, I thought maybe there's, there was some just bigger than the countywide reason that you, you can't do it typically.
So one of the other issues that, that could help solve part of that. Is the requirement to have, what, fifteen or twenty acres for an R four? So if that was reduced. So let's say it was ten acres to have an R four, and then you could submit the plans for, you know, the RV park. Still have the hundred and eighty day commitment to it, but you could just move them out for, you know. A camping trip to the Blue Ridge Parkway and move them back in the next week. So that's something to consider, there are probably more suitable ten acre or, you know. Twelve acre pieces of property than there are twenty-five or fifteen or whatever the, what's the, what's, what's R four now?
Fifteen acres for the RV park.
Fifteen acres for RV park. Where folks.
I mean, then you're opening up every other use that's in R four, if somebody's intent was really just because they needed to live in their RV.
Are they currently allowed in an R four, is a RV park?
Oh, I know, but.
Yeah.
I would, I would rather have an allowance for somebody to be able to do it on twenty acres that's not zoned R four. Than open up the ability we zone it for R four because you wanna do one or two, but then five years from now it's zoned R four and somebody comes back with a different proposal. That. Cause.
Yeah, it's already zoned.
It's zoned, that, that argument will be the first thing that's put up, I got the right, I want it zoned R four, I wanna change the condition.
Interesting. Okay.
I just, that seemed, I, again, I don't know if there's a bigger reason why, because they're not tied to the land, you, you know, even like a modular house or a mobile home is at least like, gotta. Off the wheels, off the chassis kinda thing. If there's a bigger issue that I'm just not aware of, but.
So, um, the fire inspector says that they, uh, don't meet, uh, the winds. And they don't meet flood, right? Is that what it says?
I mean, I, I would have just possibly, you know, the.
Yeah.
Sewage issue would have probably been something, you know, in the past of, you know. Who are they, where are they, how are they disposing of, I mean, they bury fifty-five gondrum in, in the yard and they're tied in, you know, I mean. Or do they're already tied into the existing sewage or, or septic tank? Um, or disposing of, I mean, I, I think that would probably be the biggest reason to. To know, so that you can say, yeah, because it is, I mean, it is a mobile home. Um. The mobile homes go through the process of making sure that they have proper sewage disposal.
And, and I'm, I'm just, I mean, currently the, the high use of it is probably just it's affordable housing.
Yeah, and they already had it, they already owned it.
Yeah, they got a friend or family in a hard spot.
And they're pretty big and very nice nowadays.
Some are. Some are. So I just, I think that's, you, you, we're gonna just be thinking on that. Along with your Appendix E, but I think that's gonna eventually come to some type of fruition for us. Um, and the last thing is, is there's a current conversation about variances. Um. Other. If it's a variance from a zoning, part of the zoning ordinance, part two, Articles one through nine. Then it has to meet the, um, advertising and, uh, public hearing standard of having two public hearings. If it's not zoning, then it only has to meet one public hearing. Um, so I think we're gonna talk about that, cause that means that, so let's say it's a, a building. Um, something was doing the building, like a pool or something like that, that they can't meet the setback, I don't know, but. Something that is non-zoning.
The shape of the lot doesn't allow the setback.
Um, the setback is a zoning thing, um.
So our code requires that or state law requires that?
So if it's a zoning issue, it has to go through two public hearings.
That's state law.
That's state law, and ours too, but it says. So the notices are sixteen days, not less than sixteen and not more than forty-five. We have a newspaper that publishes once a week. And so we have to turn it in by Friday before the Wednesday publication. And so a lot of these issues we're running into, um, for notification, are we? So, the planning board is on a Tuesday night, second Tuesday. The next commissioner meetings is on the third. But, and then the next one. Okay, so you're running into sixteen days instead of fourteen days. So now, everything is gonna be thirty days, more or less, because of the timing of it. And so I'm just letting you know that that's the requirement, but variances, do you guys wanna hear variances?
To be honest, I'm used to this is where the decision happens, in other places. A lot of places it can go to the elected body.
A, a, a lot of places it's actually a separate body called the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, zoning appeals, whatever.
That's right, zoning appeals, exactly, yeah. So, but it is, it is the opinion that it's a legislative decision. If it's zoning. Yeah, I'm just.
Give me a non-zoning thing that we would ever have an opinion on.
That's what I'm trying, like a non. Yeah, building height.
Building heights aren't covered by zoning?
That's not zoning.
And, and no, um, no, it is.
I think everything we get brought to us is.
In some jur- jurisdictions, so we did a variance for zoning heights for the apartments, but. Um, I'm trying, let me think about that, um, there are non-zoning issues, um.
Stuff we would never typically.
Well, the, the, do you want to hear variances? And you're saying you do, right?
He said he doesn't want to, but he thinks we should.
No, me?
Wait a minute. Is that, wow, that was impressive, yeah. Jeff Dunham would be proud of you, yeah.
He said this is the, he, in other places, this is the board that hears variances, that you said.
A lot of places it does not go to the city council or the county commission.
Yeah, I, I, that's not gonna happen, that's why I didn't know if you wanted to, to hear.
Happen for it not to go to commissioners?
It's gonna go to commissioners.
Well, then, then we don't wanna hear it if we don't have to.
So would an example of that be allowing your RV while your house is being built?
Oh, that's a non-zoning one. Way to go, senior planner. Do you wanna hear that one?
Public hearing and that way the audience has some input.
Well, there'll be a public hearing at the commissioner level, I'm just saying, do you guys wanna hear them?
Is that related to planning or zoning?
No.
Then to me, we don't have preview of it.
Okay.
I, that's, that's the way I. I, that's, that's the way I always like, if it's planning and zoning, and that's what we are here for, if it's not.
Right.
Like, other, other code things I like to be informed of, like what you just did, like.
Yeah, like addressing.
It's great to know it's happening and we're getting better about it, but I don't feel like.
So there might be a variance given for addressing. There could be.
Sure.
For some reason. Okay, that's good. That's, that's, that's where I, okay, that's good.
State law require, does, requires it to be run in the paper specifically?
Any zoning ordinance text, any reshaping of the map or anything like that has to go through two public hearings.
What about the advertisement though?
It has to be, we're assigned a newspaper by the state.
Okay.
So I'm like, well, could I not go to a paper that would, you know, like a daily version?
That's the challenge is when.
It is a challenge.
Once every seven days is a challenge that some places don't have.
That's right. And, and it's a challenge when you have consecutive, um, weeks of.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So I'm just, I'm just getting ahead of, some things might have to go through that process. But if you don't wanna hear variance, that's awesome. Not zoning. Zoning you would. Would you? You wanna hear zoning variances too?
No, I do. I, I, to me, if it's related to zoning.
Yes.
We should hear that variance.
We should, we should have.
And, and the reason why I think that's.
My opinion on future rezonings, if I, potentially have a say on a variance from a zoning that we're giving somebody right now.
Or if there's a consecutive requirement for a variance on a certain section of the ordinance.
Right.
Change the ordinance. Right? Yeah. Cause you can tell it's a hardship to everybody, not just one individual.
Oh, there's some zonings that are coming through saying, we know you're not gonna give it to us without extra, but we need this variance over here already.
Right.
That you're getting considered as zoning if you didn't have a say in.
The variance, that's right, yeah. Agreed, yeah, okay. Alright, good. Yeah, um, so the last, uh, one. So the commissioners, um, at their level, when there was a rezoning that came through, um, because we didn't have a sketch plan or site plan ordinance, they would require one. If they didn't require one, then they were not required to submit one. So there were some cases of vulnerability where we just wouldn't know what was there, we rezoned it, it wasn't included in the conditions, and we had nothing to fall back on to require it if they said no. So that was a problem. And so the county attorney, um, came up with, um, an ordinance for that, ha- has put it under, or is gonna put it under chapter fourteen, Buildings and Buildings Regulations, okay? That was under that, right?
Yes.
So that's this one. Subdivision does.
Yeah.
So, that's right. Now, there was some, there was some effort to try to relate everything to sketch plan or preliminary plat in the subdivision. Um, but that's not the case for industrial or commercial. And so this solves that problem. The, the county attorney wrote this to his satisfaction, and it will be, um, at the commissioner level on, um, four sixteen. Uh, there's a need to get this done. When it's done, we'll look back at it again and really massage it a little more, okay? So ask, ask away.
Why'd you see reference to LI industrial and heavy industrial again? Like, do we have those established?
Yes, we do. They're in the table of permitted uses. Actually, it's LI and HI, yeah. Now, this does not affect part B subdivisions at all. Subdivision got their own thing. We're working on that, we're almost done with it. But that does not, this is not residential, this is everything non-residential. Which is why I want you to look, which is why I want you to look at appendix E.
This is due when?
What?
When do they have to turn this?
Sixteenth.
They're, they're, they're gonna hear it on the sixteenth.
So when is the developer required?
After a rezoning is approved.
After the rezoning.
Yep, so, so, so all you're, all you're doing is looking at which zone it is. They can tell you what's gonna go there. They can show you what's gonna go there, but it doesn't have to go there. Until that's accepted.
And this is gonna come back on our agenda?
Um.
Commissioner's agenda.
It's gonna, it's gonna go to the commissioners, and then we're gonna take a look at it and put a few finishing touches on it.
No, I'm saying the site plans.
Will it come through?
Oh, the site plan, where does the site plan come from? Board of Commissioners. Do you wanna see them?
I don't.
Huh?
Well, I mean.
Now, remember, we don't advertise for site plans.
It's not, it's not a public hearing.
It is not a public hearing.
I would like to see them, but because our opinions are non-binding, I don't see the point.
Well, alright, so, say for instance, we adopt this. The sketch plan that's coming forward to us tonight no longer will be required, cause there's gonna be a site plan that we, we would never get a chance to see again in the future.
That is a correct statement.
I mean, I agree it's not binding, right? So I mean, that's. To me, this is what, I keep referring Spanish, this would be a general development plan. It's like a one-page plan that shows you all the zoning compliance and stuff. It's not the full document, it's not the full set of engineered plans, correct?
It is not the construction plans, but it is the, I'm gonna do this and I can't get away from doing this once it's adopted.
It's a conceptual.
It's beyond conceptual. So it, it is, it is what I tell you I'm gonna build, and when we go out there and inspect it, it is actually what you have built.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not a lot of speculation involved in it.
And they have twelve months to build.
To build it, that's right. And if, and if it's not done then, then they have to come back through the process again.
That's not fair.
That's not fair?
Yeah, some projects can't build in twelve months.
Yeah, you can't get the wellings done in twelve months.
They can ask for variance.
If they're actively under construction, could that, I mean.
Oh, no, actively under construction. It's, they have to start construction within a year, they don't have to complete it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, if construction does not begin within twelve months.
Meaning that something has happened to where that site plan is no longer relevant, yeah.
Oh, that's typical permit.
Yeah. Are they ready over there? And that's it? I will tell you that sometime, probably at the next meeting, you'll have, um, another attempt at definitions that are in the zoning ordinance. Um, so we'll send it to you ahead of time. And then, uh, that's the most pressing issue, and we might have another, um, run-through with subdivision. With a strikeout.
Right, aren't they strikeout?
Yeah. So the, having the county engineer here, and I'm not, I wanna speak for him, but has, um, he has tweaked some of the, um, actually, I can't, but he has tweaked some of the, um, standards that are in the road and so, in stormwater and that kinda stuff. So, that's good. Yeah. Alright.
What else?
Sorry, here we go. See site plans or not?
Up to y'all.
And, and you're talking about site plans along with the rezoning?
Well, no, I mean, I think that's still not, that's not far enough alone to be considered as binding site plan that's gonna be required, right? I'll be honest, my stance on the sketch plans has always been if it meets the requirements.
Yeah.
I don't really see the public, because it just makes people think it is a public process. So, maybe, maybe we'd wanna see it if it's associated with, again, a variance or something like that.
Yeah.
That would go for sketch, in my opinion, probably go for sketch plans too. Like, if it meets the requirements.
Yeah, that's, and it's our job, if it doesn't meet the requirements, then they just, they don't get it, until it does.
Right.
Right, yeah. I think the purpose of the commissioner seeing it, because it's not necessarily legislative action, but it is binding at that point in time. Meaning this is what you said you're gonna do when we go out for a final inspection, that's what it needs to look like, that's the document that we have.
I, I guess it could be beneficial because you actually see what you've approved. I mean, you, you've rezoned it, and now you come back with a site plan, and you can actually look at it and see.
I find it beneficial, because yes, I do feel like sometimes we give some, even if it, they don't go with our recommendation, there's some points that are brought up that have maybe improved some sketch plans or site plans and.
Or, or, or you visually see something on there that you're like, I, I don't like that, we need to, we need to make a change here. I mean, this is, this was never the intention or, you know.
Yeah, even though the ordinance says that we don't like it.
Yeah, I mean, it's allowed, it's legal, but I think we need to, before this goes any, to the, to the next month, I mean, I think we need to make a change here, you know.
There's opportunity, maybe not for that project, but you're saying for like picks in the ordinance, because we had to approve it here, but.
Absolutely.
That was, that was a flaw we should address in the future, yeah.
I, I could see that being a benefit for, for being able to look at it. Before you wait a year for it to be constructed and to say, wow, we're really.
So who, who's reviewing staff level wise? Does this go to the consultant to review and give feedback?
Site plans?
Yeah.
Samantha?
Okay, so it wouldn't go to like, the full like civil review site plans consultant?
Uh, we have Jonathan now, who also assisted me with our.
It's not going to EOM.
It's not going to EOM?
No, it does, no, that's April first, that all stopped. So he's looking at it, she's looking at it, and we actually go out and visit.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
Uh, fire safety inspections, uh, based on the construction plans. So you got the inspectors that do that, and then the fire safety goes out and, and does that as well.
So they, they get this approved, but there's still the full civil permit plans that have to be submitted and approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes. But there is an advantage to having all that in-house, is that it is still quicker. We're not quite done with stormwater yet, but that will be in-house soon enough. Yeah, utility is not. So the county engineer has.
Same thing they're concerned, I mean, where a pipe or size of a pipe is not, I mean, they wanna know what the site plan looks like and the things that are specific to that, right? Not you, not, not the county, I'm talking about the commissioners wise, right? Like what we're, on this site.
They, they do not review utility plans at all.
Yeah, so that's not what this, this one, this one's more.
Yeah, this is, this is all, this is more zoning related, right? How thick is your pavement, you know, where's your driveway gonna go? How many bushes you got? Uh, so Jonathan has the highest, um, review status, uh, for stormwater, right? You have a, what's it called, tan car? Road control, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so that's very helpful. Code enforcement has all, uh, went out and got their red cards for enforcement. And then Greg, um, has, uh, the blue, red card, blue card. Yeah, so, and then he can review plans. So we've got stormwater, we've done a lot of cross-training to get ma- get ready for this, so everybody can, can take a look. So code could go out there and say, hey, there's a violation because they don't have their silt fencing up or something like that. Pretty, pretty good.
What it's gonna do too is instead of the planes going up to GSWCC up in Athens, we're gonna be redoing them here.
Speed that process up.
Speed this process up.
That's good.
Little, little more efficiency.
As well, cause I'm having to look at stormwater anyway, and a road control or plan disturbing application anyway, so. I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah. So increase the efficiency and, and save some outside costs.
Awesome.
So we're ready next door.
Alright, anything else?
Meeting adjourned.